Good morning. Today is Tuesday, April 27, 2021, and this is the regularly scheduled meeting of the Kings County Board Supervisors. Due to issues arising from COVID-19, the board is using a teleconferencing format for today's meeting. We are all participating via the World Wide Web. If you would like to make a public comment today, please make sure you are identified by name in the WebX system. For those interested in commenting during unscheduled appearances, please use the Raise Your Hand feature and wait to be recognized. Each speaker will be allowed up to two minutes for public comment. Each vote today will be a verbal or voice vote so that members of the public can hear how each board member has voted. After we have had a motion and a second regarding each item we're taking up today, we will be doing a roll call vote by district. Madam Clerk, would you please call roll?
Joan Eves.
Here.
Richard Valley.
Here.
Doug Verboon.
Here.
Craig Peterson.
Here.
Richard Fagundes.
Here.
Okay, we have five present today. So this time, we will now move to the invocation. We have Robert Needham, the Kings County Sheriff's Chaplain. Good morning.
Master Needham, can you hear us?
Yes, barely.
Okay, we're ready for your invocation.
And let us pray. Eternal Father in heaven, we thank you on every occasion you grant us the privilege of quieting our often stressed hearts and our busy minds. We ask you to redirect our attention to you, the ultimate source of all grace and light and truth. We thank you that you both hear and answer our prayers when we come to you in the great filled name of Jesus. Help us to remember Solomon's words in Psalm 127. Unless the Lord builds a house, they labor in vain to build it. Unless the Lord guards the city, the watchman keeps awake in vain. So Lord, we come before you today with a large petition. Please grant to our beloved country your powerful work of your Holy Spirit in restoring and returning us to those eternal truths which you so powerfully applied in the lives of our nation's founders. Please grant us the grace corporately and individually to attend to every sin which violates the Holy Spirit and has resulted in animosity and division amongst us rather than agreement and gracious teamwork. So we petition you to grant to all those whom we elect public office to rule over us at whatever level that is with the graces of discernment, forbearance, wisdom, diligence, integrity, and the rarest jewel of all, God-given humility. Most especially, we hold up in prayer our county supervisors and all those who serve under their leadership. May their services to all the citizens of each county be so consistent with your holy word that all without exception are providentially blessed by you, the Lord of heaven and earth. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. You would all please join me in the flag salute.
Ready salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the United States of America. One nation under God.
All right, this time we'll move to item two, which is unscheduled appearances. Any person may directly address the board at this time on any item on the agenda or any other items of interest to the public that is within the subject matter jurisdiction of the board. Two minutes are allowed for each item. Okay, this morning, we have Dusty French from Kings County Farm Bureau. Dusty.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Thanks for the time this morning. I'm really here today to answer questions or talk about item B under the regular agenda items. So whatever your pleasure is, I can talk about that now or wait until the agenda item is discussed.
Yeah, let's wait till, let's hold that till we get to that specific item.
Very good. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Other comments? And then written? Okay, so we have neither any formal comments or written comments at this point. We'll move to item three, which is approval of the minutes from the April 20th, 2021.
I make a motion to approve minutes from April 20th, 2021. We're better.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Madam Clerk, please call roll.
Joan Eves.
Yes.
Richard Valley.
Aye.
Doug Verboon.
Yes.
Craig Peterson.
Aye.
Richard Fagundes.
Yes.
Hey, we have five in favor. Motion carries. We'll move now to item four, consent calendar. And just as a heads up, there were some minor modifications for item E2, and that will be for pulled for an update and short discussion. And then that, board, what's your pleasure?
I'll make a motion to approve the consent counter as presented.
Okay, we have a we have a motion and second to approve the calendar, consent calendar as amended. Madam Clerk, please call roll.
Joan Eves.
Yes.
Richard Valley.
Aye.
Doug Verboon.
Yes.
Craig Peterson.
Aye.
Richard Fagundes.
Yes.
Okay, we have five in favor on the amended motion. We'll now move back to item E2 and understand there is an update. Set from the Health Department.
Yes, Heather Silva should be coming forward. Hi, I apologize. That was on mute. Can you guys hear me?
Yes, please go ahead.
Hi, okay, great. So, good morning, Mr. Chairman and members of the board. Heather Silva with Public Health. Today, we ask for this item to be pulled from consent due to recent minor changes in the contract that was distributed last week. Unfortunately, due to staff turnover and leaves in critical positions, this contract snuck up on us, necessitating an extremely fast turnaround time in this contract. We would like to thank County Council, the CAO's office, and the Clerk of the Board for assisting with this aggressive timeline on this contract. As this contract continues, the services provided by Elite Nursing, which is our current medical staffing for all of our vaccine efforts and the reasons why we are able to provide COVID vaccines throughout the county. So there was some miscommunication, and the wrong agreement was submitted to the Clerk of the Board early last week. We recognized this late in the day on Friday after it was published and wanted to point out the differences to your board between what was originally published and what the contract agreement states. So there were some minor reformatting changes that occurred, and sections of the corrected agreement were rearranged, including the language on FEMA and the anti-lobbing language. There was a typo in section 8.1. The general, the commercial general liability is $2 million per occurrence and $4 million annual aggregate, which has been approved by risk management. And then exhibits B, C, and D were added, which include the routine HIPAA requirements, the certification of lobbying form, and the ADA grievance procedure. Other than those minor changes, the term of the agreement, the compensation for services, and the scope of the agreement all remain unchanged. Services provided by elite medical staff will continue to be funded from previously approved funding until June 30th of 2021 in the estimated amount of $252,000. The remaining term of this agreement will be funded with an immunization grant, which begins July 1st, 2021 through June 30th, 2022, and not to exceed the amount of $1,115,000. The immunization grant was awarded to Kings County to provide additional resources for vaccination and other healthcare services during the COVID-19 pandemic. That concludes my report, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Are you going to thank you? Other questions from the board? If none, action.
I'll make a motion to approve as presented.
Eves, a second.
Very good. And so, thank you. We will we have a motion and a second. So Madam Clerk, please call roll.
Joan Eves.
Yes.
Richard Valley.
Aye.
Doug Verboon.
Yes.
Craig Peterson.
Aye.
Richard Fagundes.
Yes.
Okay, we have five in favor. That ends our consent calendar. We'll now move to regular agenda items. And just for information purposes, item A, A1, B, and C have been pooled and will be brought back at a later date. So with that, we will move into item A with Administration and Public Works.
Yes, and Domingo Cruz is on the line. He will start the discussion revolved around this item. Thank you, Domingo.
You're welcome, Rebecca. Mr. Chairman, members of the board, good morning. Domingo Cruz, one of your administrative analysts in the Administrative Office. So this morning, I'm here to request that your board award the Senate Bill 81, Round 2 Juvenile Center Remodel Project, to Catch Environmental Inc., the apparent low bidder, in the amount of $13,775,214. So your board approved the plans and specifications and authorized advertising of the project on January 12, 2021, after receiving state approval and January 7, 2021. On February 23rd, 2021, your board rejected A1, responsive and responsible bid due to the amount submitted significantly exceeded the available funding allocated to this project. Then your board authorized re-advertising, which started on March 17, 2021. A blind bid opening process occurred on April 22nd, 2021, and Catch Environmental Inc. from Fresno, California is the apparent low bidder for the project. The other bidder was Bo Contractors Inc. from Lancaster, California. So it is anticipated that the start of the construction is May 24th, 2021, with a completion date of August 23rd, 2022. And finally, the estimated occupancy date is November 23rd, 2022. So funds for the SB 81 Round 2 Juvenile Center Remodel Project are included in the adopted fiscal year 2020-2021 budget. Budget Unit 70003, KC SB 81 Project. Account 94105, SB 81 Project. The cost of the construction is in the amount of the apparent low bidder, which is The project team has reviewed the project budget and determined that there are insufficient funds to cover this cost. Again, the bid is over the allocated budget. Staff is seeking additional sources of funding to mitigate this shortfall. So let me share the screen with you so that we can go over the budget and mitigation recommendation. Can you see my screen?
Yes.
So if I could get your attention to on the top left, the adopted revenue that your board gave us through the years is $13,793,000 in total. So in, that's include the $9,600,000 SB 81 grant that was conditionally awarded to us early in February, early 2015. The $2,000, $2,630,000 in capital outlay, that was our catch match that your board approved in FY 14 and 15. The $600,000 for the mental health services act capital funds in FY 16 and 17. And the $1,530,000 from the Public Protection Impact Fee for the 20 20, 2021 budget that your board adopted back in September. So if you could go to the right of this side of the slide, the current expenditure projection, we showed you the bid as mentioned earlier, and the soft cost is $3,427,067. That includes your, some of the, that will go in the project that we've been working on. Your material testing, special inspection, surveying, computers, telephones, and furnitures. Also included in that is, to just show it, is the contingency. So the total is $7,202,281. So in the middle, this is our shortfall, So the recommended mitigation is, to your board, is to hold off the court remodel that we were going to start in the near future. Use the remainder of the Public Protection Impact Fees for the court remodel, which is in the amount of $1,443,288. And remainder of the Public Protection Impact Fees through FY 21, 22, which is $745,052. And the last one is to borrow from the library impact fees, So in the future, we will pay the loan from the library from the Public Protection Impact Fee. So additional agreements and purchases will come before your board in the future for approval for this project. Again, including but not limited to the main contract with Catch Environmental Inc. As I mentioned, material testing, special inspections, surveying, services, computers, telephones, and furniture. Mr. Paul Kachidorian, the president of Catch Environmental Inc., I believe, is on the line if you have any questions for him. That concludes my presentation. Were any question? I respectfully request that your board award the Senate Bill 81, Round 2 Juvenile Center Remodel Project, to Catch Environmental Inc., the apparent low bidder, in the amount of $13,775,214. Thank you.
Thank you for the information. At this time, we'll bring you back to the board unless the contractor wishes to make any statements at this point. I'd do that.
This is, this is Paul with Catch Environmental, only that we're motivated and excited and and very grateful for the opportunity.
Very good. Thank you, sir. Thank you for your comments. Obviously, yes.
I also want to add that this project, you know, it's, we've been working on it for a long time. This project still remains most important. Last year, in the governor's state budget, SB 823 was adopted, and the closure of the Department of Juvenile Justice is occurring. As of July 1st this year, they will stop taking intakes into that facility. The county will be posed with keeping those juvenile wards here. And so that impacts the need for this project. Also, our current facility is working, but it's not steady the art. And the need for this project is there, and I highly recommend that you move forward with the proposal.
Mr. Chair, I may also address the board. The board is aware that the current facility and the juvenile detention program are under serious review by state-appointed juvenile advocates, the Disability Rights Center. And as a consequence, many of the complaints that they have leveled against the county are facilities-based. The fact that certain juveniles can't be segregated, that it doesn't comply with the Americans with Disabilities Act. It's, it's county council's view that building a new facility that is compliant will go a long way towards mitigating the potential risks of very expensive litigation with the Disability Rights Center and state-appointed rights advocate organizations that construction and approval of this project would go a long way to mitigating the expensive.
Thanks. Thanks for the update. Again, we'll bring it back to the board for questions and comments.
If there's no question, comment, probably we'll present it.
Quick questions, sir? I was trying to.
Yep.
I don't know if you can.
Go ahead.
Yeah. Supervisor Val, thank you, Mr. Chair. The, I just have, I just want to check off what the Library Department had. I know, I know in the past, anytime that budget is meant, has been touched, could we just hear from her if she's fine with with these monies that were borrowed from, from her budget, please?
Supervisor Valley, oh, she, this is just before Natalie Renter responds, I just want to add that we were working into the night, last night, to come up with a plan. And we were trying to balance the capital budget over the weekend and yesterday. So this is new information from Ms. Renter as well.
You didn't, you didn't consult with the
No, I had not had a chance.
To the board?
No, the board, this is the first time presenting this information, and this it's borrowing the money, but we will put it back.
Well, I would just like to say even before she comments, even if she's perfectly fine with it, could you please give the department heads the respect of at least touching base with them on an issue like that? Please. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Do. Go ahead, Ms. Renter.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the board. Good morning, Rebecca. As Supervisor Valley has said, I actually just sent an email to Dom and Rebecca in regards to, as a courtesy, to be included in any types of monies involving the library. I believe that's due to any department head that works for this county. So I was not alerted on that. As far as how I feel, I don't know because I haven't had the discussion with our CAO just yet. So, but that's just where I'm at at this point.
Mr. Chairman, could I ask for a friendly, I don't want to call it an amendment, but I know Super Verboon has a motion on the table. But would, would the board consider, or the maker of the motion, consider an opportunity to table this till next week so the department head from the library could get the respect to at least communicate any negative impacts that may happen to, to her budget? And, and that way, we as a board just feel more confident in this financial plan moving forward. I want to be a yes vote. I have no problem being a yes vote today just despite what we're learning on, on, on the question here regarding the library budget. Thank, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Supervisor Valley, the county council, good morning. Is that a motion to table?
Uh, no, I, I don't, I don't want to make a competitive motion to my colleagues. Super Verboon has a motion on the table. I was, I was just asking if, if he would consider that.
Actually, his motion is a substantive motion. A motion to table is a procedural motion that would take precedence. So if you were inclined to move to table it, then the chair would accept a second. Otherwise, Supervisor Verboon would have to withdraw his motion or allow it to fail for lack of a second as it has not been seconded yet.
Super Verboon, any, I'm, I'm trying, I, I want to be respectful here and just try to get us a week to, to look at this and, and give the department head an opportunity to research your budget. I would, I would parlay to you, sir.
Okay, thank you. So what's the library fund got to do with this project?
So if I could just add, we haven't had a chance to have those discussions yet. We were working into the evening hours on this plan. What I would ask is that we move forward because we really need to get the construction started. If we have further delay, it adds more cost to the project. But we will have those discussions. We're going to have to bring back additional items for the contract, which will include the cost items for this. If this plan does not work, we will come up with another plan for funding this project. So we will have those discussions this week as soon as we can. And it all, it not only affects the library, it affects the departments that were going to go into that courthouse. There was a plan in our 10-year capital outlay plan for County Council's office, Public Guardian, Veterans Services Office, to go into that courthouse. Haven't had a chance to have those discussions yet with those departments, but I certainly intend to do so as soon as possible. And so I would ask that we keep the construct, we move forward toward the contract so we can fulfill our state requirements and get this project moving. But we will have those discussions and bring back this plan or an alternative plan.
One more week? You can afford one week to, to bring back next week? I'm sure it won't be a problem after we have the opportunity to have more confidence. And to not talk to the department heads and not even tell us, give us that information without being asked, there's no transparency there in, in my opinion on there. I want, I want to be a yes vote, but I want to be disrespectful to a department head who hasn't had the ability to have their voice heard. And, and to learn on the call, if I was a department head and I learned this during the board meeting, I would feel disrespected myself. It's not, it's not good business. And, and again, I'm not trying to go against the grain here. I, I don't see what one more week is going to do here, Mr. Chair. Let's, let's, to, to bring it back and vote with full confidence and respect.
Yeah, thank you. And I do have a couple of questions with respect to the actual account. And what do we know? We obviously know what, what there is in that account. Is it the whole reserve or is it?
I think it's about $7 million. I might be wrong. I, I remember like two years ago I brought it up because I was, I just brought it up.
And I think that, yeah, the director's on the line as well, if she would like to maybe.
Domingo, Domingo has the information on the impact fees. There's also, the library has a large contingency that Super Valley may be referring to. But, Mr. Cruz, can you outline the impact fee amount, the total projected amount for fiscal year 21, 22 for the library impact fee account?
So we'll do there. So right now, the, the projected for the library fund, if you want me to show it to you, I'll show it to you. It's $1,431,715. That's including, that, that's without the, the $500,000 that we allocated this year with the Avinale and more libraries. So again, so that's the, the final estimated what's left in the library impact fee is that amount, 1.4 million.
Okay, thank you. And how, from a backfill standpoint, those are annual, annualized funds that accrue in that account or is that?
As development occurs in the county, the county incurs development impact fees. So it's not, you know, it just depends on the economy and what's happening within the county each year. But since impact fees have been adopted, we have incurred impact fees and been building them up.
And then another question is, as you develop this program, and I know obviously timelines are, are hard on this project, in looking at how you backfill those, those are hard on this project, in looking at how you backfill those funds and the timeline that the library fund would be without that funding, do you have some anticipated timelines on the backfill?
We haven't had a chance to look at that yet. I also want to mention that there's also a balance in the FIRE impact fee fund. So there are some options for impact fees for the board, but we haven't had a chance to go through it. These were, you know, last-minute solutions that we were trying to come up with once we got the bid information last week and trying to balance out the capital budget to see where, what that was at yesterday and coming up with a solution last night.
All right. Well, clearly challenging times and as a small county, we're always, you know, I mean, this SB 81 project has been on the docket for some time and now our hand's been forced by the state to responsibly, you know, retain these kids onsite. And, you know, I appreciate the work that's been done, you know, from the administrative office, but we do have to move in some fashion here. And so...
My motion stands out of respect to Kelly Zuniga and no disrespect to Supervisor Bowe, but I think that I'm going to move forward with this project. I have faith in our staff to continue to work together and not lead anybody's reserves and look forward to this project. We need to get it done. We've been talking about it for at least six, seven, eight, nine years since I've been here. So the day we pull the trigger, we got a contractor that's excited, ready to just go to work. It'd be up to our staff to work together to make it go smoothly along with the construction manager. So my motion stands. So...
I'll second that motion.
Okay, that's very good. Yes, Supervisor Bowe.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to be a yes vote on it. Would you mind if we just hear one more time from Natalie now that she's had a couple, a few minutes to at least digest it? Maybe she's a go on this? Could we give her that respect?
Those of you guys who have worked with me, I've been here for 11 years. I've always been a team player and don't mind being a team player. I just would like to have had the courtesy to be involved in the discussion. This is the first time this has ever has happened. I do have a friends of the library and a library advisory board who are monitoring these funds as well. So now I have to go back and tell them that this has happened and no one's been made aware of it. And that's the only thing I could say about that. And I guess I will let them know that we'll have future discussions with our CIO's office on this. But it's not just me, but the library does represent the public. And that's all I have to say on this issue.
Thank you, Natalie.
Thank you for allowing her to do that, Mr. Chairman. I just want to close by asking, and I know I'm only one of five, but asking that this doesn't happen again. Department heads have a deadline when they got to turn in all this information to get on agenda. I understand this is important, but if it's that important, why are we working, you know, at the last minute, the night before the meeting and asking five of us to vote on an issue without having that information? That's not, it doesn't make fiscal sense. It's not transparent. And it takes away the CIO's trust, in my opinion, that the department heads trust in her because this sends a message that, keep your guard up because your budget could get raided in the middle, in the middle of the night while you're sleeping and you'll wake up in the morning and have your budget raided in front of the board of supervisors publicly. You know, it's disrespectful. This is an important topic. I agree with Supa Verboon. This is important. I know Kelly Zuniga and the respect her as a department head, she's looking forward to the yes vote too. I want to be supportive, but this is a difficult position to be put in by the CIO and I just don't appreciate it. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yep. Well, thank you for those comments. And I'll just, you know, state that, you know, none of these projects are easy. We're in budget season, you know, all of these things. And I agree, full respect for, you know, our library fund and, you know, Natalie and the whole community who uses, you know, that system. I think, you know, the budget item, I've heard a commitment from, you know, the CIO to backfill that. And I know timing isn't good, but I know they, they've got multiple, as always, multiple plates of requirements that are moving forward and, you know, timelines aren't always easy with these projects. But we do have a motion in second on the floor. And so at this time, is there any further discussion? Seeing none, we'll move to vote. Madam Clerk, please call it all.
Joan Eves?
Yes.
Richard Valley?
Aye.
Doug Verboon?
Yes.
Craig Peterson?
Aye.
Richard Fagundes?
Yes.
Okay, we have five in favor and a very strong commitment to the library fund to make sure that that is the first money that'll go back and be replaced. And Natalie, thank you so much. And we'll work to be better in the future on these items as well. So...
Mr. Chair, also, there probably needs, we need to talk, if we're going to start raiding everybody's impact fees, we need to start talking about some interest-bearing as well because this, this can't go on. We can't use everybody as a funding supply for projects. And so that's going to have to be repaid at an interest rate and that probably needs to be added to an agenda in the future. Because that's, it's probably good policy to have, but, you know, we didn't talk about interest-bearing. We didn't talk about that, the use of money. The other part that has me concerned on this project is, you know, it was already 50% above its construction costs and there's only a 7% contingency. And where's that contingency money going to come from? You know, because I don't think 7%, to be honest with you, today's construction costs are going to be anywhere close. And so, you know, we really need to have a policy, not in the 11th hour, not the night before, working on it. And the library has been very successful because we've had a 20-year plan of how to improve the service. And it seems like we're not there on the fiscal side of some of these other projects. And so it really needs to be addressed. We really need to have a policy. Department heads need to be aware of it. And personally, on a couple of other ventures I'm in, you know, that it's got to be the equal price of money. It can't just, you can't borrow money one for one like the federal government does against Social Security. It's got to have some kind of interest-bearing return for that, for that organization not to have full fund.
Okay. Well, that will be an issue that we'll have to bring back in an agenda item in the future and hopefully in the short future with respect to that item. And so we will now move to item 5B. And Ms. Campbell?
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chair. So the next item is a resolution related to federal working hours, work standards for herders' resolution. So Assembly Bill 1066 was adopted by the California Legislature and signed by the government, by the governor. And it allowed for California herders, it increased the sheep and goat herder pay by an economically unsustainable 50%. It changed some of the ways that the overtime was calculated for their pay. And unfortunately, it is unsustainable the way it was set. There are some allowances for the governor to take action within that bill and law to make some changes administratively, to reset how those sheep herders are paid. And so the resolution outlines asking the governor to use his administrative authority to adopt the federal weekly hours work standard for herders in California. Right now, in 2015, the Federal Department of Labor determined that the herder work hours couldn't be tracked because of its remoteness. And so 48 hours of work week was a reasonable estimate. And further, that the federal courts have upheld the determination that it is reasonable and supported by the evidence at the federal court. So unfortunately, with our industry, Kings County does have a, industry in the sheep and herders, and it is vital to our economy and it is vital that we keep it sustained. So the resolution outlines that urge, asking the governor to use his administrative authority to adopt the federal weekly hours work standards for the herders in California, which will make it more sustainable for our ag economy.
Thank you. And I know we have, from the Kings County Farm Bureau, Dusty Ferenc, the executive director. And Dusty, you have some comments for us today?
Yeah, first of all, thanks for considering this resolution today. A coalition of industry groups has been working on this exemption for sheep herders since 1066 was adopted in 16 or 17, I forget the year exactly now. We've tried to make this legis, make this change happen through legislative channels and that has been met with defeat. Having the governor take administrative action is kind of our last chance to, from our perspective at least, save the sheep and goat herders industry in California. And that's more impactful than just sheep and goats. It affects our hay industry and our fire protection up and down the state. Tulare County is considering a resolution similar to this this morning. Fresno County has adopted a resolution like what you all are considering this morning. Madera and Merced and Kern have also been asked to consider those, consider similar resolutions. And unfortunately, I don't have an update on where those counties are, but this is a South Valley effort we're making here. That's all the comments I have. I'm happy to answer any questions you all might have.
Great, thanks for your comments. Questions from the board? Not seeing any. So we entertain a motion this time.
Never move adoption of the resolution supporting the sheep and goat industry.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Supervisor Bowe, did you have a comment?
I was offering a second. I didn't hear...
Okay, thank you. All right. We do have a motion and a second at this time. So Madam Clerk, please call it all.
Joan Eves?
Yes.
Richard Valley?
Aye.
Doug Verboon?
Yes.
Craig Peterson?
Aye.
Richard Fagundes?
Yes.
Okay, we have five in favor. Now we'll move to item 5C, which is administration and public health. Ms. Campbell?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. This item is a weekly item regarding the status of the COVID-19 pandemic in Kings County. There wasn't much activity at the state level this past week. Much of the work was focused on the budget and legislative matters at the federal. I wanted to give your board an update that the president will deliver his first address to joint session of Congress. The prime time event will be scaled back in attendance with less than a fifth of the chamber's total seating expected to be filled as a precaution against COVID-19. On the county, the county has taken steps to reduce its health risks to employees and the public by adjusting business practices and service delivery through many of its departments. The next step will be to bring back employees from teleworking, anticipating that employees will have an opportunity to vaccinate by the end of May and coordinating that return to the office on June 14th, which also lines up with school summer break and the state's reopening on June 15th. I wanted to let your board know that risk management has met with all departments for inspections and taken all precautionary measures in accordance with OSHA guidelines. And the return to work plans have been made. And so the teleworking employees will return to the office on June 14th. And that's all I have for updates. And so I will turn it over to Mr. Hill for a public health update.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Ed Hill, Public Health. As usual, I'd like to start my report as I always do by reminding everyone the simple steps we can all take to help protect ourselves from communicable diseases such as COVID-19, which are frequently wash your hands for 20 seconds or more, don't touch your face with unwashed hands, stay hydrated with water, a hydrated cell is a healthy cell, stay home if you are sick, and wear a cloth, face covering to protect yourself and loved ones. Our current numbers for this week are, the number of samples collected are 217,738. We currently have 178 results pending. We are monitoring 3,119 individuals. Our current total cases is at 15,640 since the outbreak began, unfortunately with 228 deaths. We have 12,295 closed cases and our current open cases is at 3,117. The skilled nursing facilities in Kings County have not had any changes again since the outbreak began. They've had 311 cases. They currently have zero open cases, 269 closed cases, and unfortunately, 42 deaths. There's also been very little movement on the state prison outbreaks. They remain at 7,664 cases since the outbreak began. They've collected 129,738 samples. They currently have 50 test results pending. Their current open cases is at two, closed cases is at 7,645, unfortunately with 14, or excuse me, 18 deaths. And we are showing none hospitalized at this time. We continue to watch hospital data very closely. We're seeing what I would call stable med surge and general admissions as the number continues to hover around six and 10 locally. On a regional level, the med surge and general admissions continued to decline. We currently have nobody in our ICUs, our ICU and ICU admissions throughout the region seem to have increased slightly over the weekend. As of 4/25, the local hospital had 10 COVID patients in med surgeon, zero in the ICU. We are still maintaining our PPE supply for all of our medical providers. Our mobile testing program site schedule for this week is on our website. And unfortunately, we still have not heard an update on the expansion testing with the municipalities. We asked the unified support team to provide some updates. We're not hearing anything, so we're assuming that that program or that pilot was terminated and we just haven't been, that information hasn't been shared with us. Our current metrics for the blueprint are, our new cases per 100,000 is at 4.4. As mentioned last week, we did see a small increase in cases over the prior week and it looks like that is starting to level off. And we will continue to watch that closely. Overall, testing positivity is at 1.6 and our testing positivity in the lowest quartile of the Healthy Places Index is at 1.2. So this means that our new cases meets the orange tier criteria and our testing positivity still meets the yellow tier criteria. Our test per 100,000 has increased to 420. Again, we're hovering at a very strong testing daily average, which is good to see. And then I need to state, with cases counts as low as they are and as we continue to see them stay low, we're going to start to intensify our efforts in case management, isolation and identification. As you recall, in the past, this is important when our case numbers are low so that we have an opportunity to hopefully slow the spread of the virus moving forward. And when we were in that full-blown, out-of-control pandemic several months ago, it made that situation almost impossible to manage. But now that our case counts are lower, we have a better opportunity to isolate as we move forward. On the vaccine update, last week, public health administered 1,513 vaccines. Again, we don't have any visibility in the Opt-in Serve anymore and what they're doing on a daily basis. We continue to have plenty of vaccine appointments available throughout all of our clinics and there are plenty of appointments available throughout the county. As a reminder, as of April 7th, we open to everyone 16 years and older. And just as a reminder, 16 and older is only for Pfizer. They're the only vaccine that's approved for that age group. 18 and older is for Moderna and the Johnson &amp; Johnson. Also mentioned, last week, two weeks ago, we were approached by the state due to the amount of vaccine in our inventory, future allocations and current throughput. The state stated on this call that it's been happening across the state and they're asking for vaccine to be redistributed to other areas. Again, just to provide your board with a refresher, when it came to options, we asked that they remove the Opt-in Serve state vaccine site here as there's currently three vaccine sites within a quarter mile of each other. And we have begun the process of having them demobilize that site and we will continue to update you as that strategy continues. Another option was stopping or slowing the allocations from moving forward so that we can just use some of our inventory... so that we can just use some of our inventory on hand. This also sat better with us because, you know, the logistics of moving vaccines is a little bit challenging, so we, it'd be easier if we just kept the vaccines here. And then the final recommendation was to return some of our on-hand vaccines to the state. And then we suggested only reallocating some of the vaccines to other counties, especially counties with a large migratory farm worker population, as those workers will soon be traveling to other counties throughout the state, including Kings County. And so we want to make sure that we get ahead of that vaccine effort. So far, Kings County providers have administered 59,165 vaccines. It is also anticipated that Pfizer will soon have emergency use authorization, authorization, excuse me, to expand vaccine eligibility to the 12 and older population, and we will begin to have discussions with local clinics and schools on rolling out these vaccine efforts as soon as this change occurs, but we're anticipating it could be as soon as two weeks from now. Also, on April 24th, the review of the Johnson and Johnson was concluded by the Western State Scientific Safety Review Work Group, and on April 23rd, the FDA lifted its pause on the use of the Johnson and Johnson vaccine. Earlier this month, the CDC and FDA recommended a temporary pause in the use of the vaccine out of an abundance of caution, and California followed that temporary pause. Of more than 7.9 million doses administered nationally, there have been at least a dozen reported cases of a rare, severe type of blood clot seen in combination with low levels of blood platelets. The symptoms occur six to 13 days after vaccination and include severe headache, abdominal pain, leg pain, and shortness of breath within three weeks after vaccination. Individuals who exhibit these symptoms should contact their local healthcare provider and seek medical care. All of the oversight agencies are recommending that additional education be provided to individuals receiving the immunization at the point of distribution on the associated risks so that these individuals can make an informed decision. But the state and the feds did end that pause, and we, as long as the rest of the state and the nation are now answering, are offering the Johnson and Johnson vaccine moving forward. Finally, during the meeting last week, we were asked our opinion on the level of herd immunity within the county. Our Epi team is estimating that approximately 50 poor, excuse me, 54% of residents have some type of protection from the virus. We're using the term protection instead of immunity because there are a number, because the number is based on several assumptions established by the CDC on the estimated rate of asymptomatic infections, the number of positive cases, and the number of fully vaccinated residents. Again, this is just an estimate, and it's based on multiple assumptions. Additionally, there is still debate on how long any type of protection in any form truly lasts, and as we continue to learn more about that, we will continue to provide updates to your board. So the message takeaway for today is, again, continue to get tested, get vaccinated, and continue to implement the simple steps that can protect you from communicable diseases. That concludes my report, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Very good, thank you. Questions, comments from the board?
Mr. Chairman, if not, I'd like an opportunity to thank you, Mr. Chair. First, I just want to tell Mr. Hill, thank you. I am supportive of his, the plan to send some vaccines to areas with large farm worker populations. That strategically, that's very smart to help them get vaccinated, knowing that they're coming to Kings County. So, good, good work there, sir. Mr. Chairman, I don't want to take up the board's, a lot of the board's time here today, but, but I do, I don't want to call it an ask. I want, I want to point out what I feel is a responsibility that we, as the five elected leaders, have here. And so, very simply, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to suggest that, you know, that the Board of Supervisors get an opportunity in a study session to hear a presentation, and a presentation that includes any feedback from our county department heads to, so that the five of us can also feel good and ensure a safe transition when it comes to the return of the employees of Kings County. Now, Mr. Chairman, I know we gave the CAO a lot of authority throughout the pandemic, but we, as leaders, we, we knew when we had to take votes on things, we knew that it was up to us to declare a shelter in place or to remove a shelter in place, or there was critical votes that the five of us took, as we should. And so as we've went through this full year, and we, we've learned a lot during the pandemic, I think that we have the responsibility to hear the, hear this information presented, but also for the public to hear it and our employees to hear it versus just getting notified that, hey, you're coming back on June 15th. And, and, you know, Mr. Chairman, the, there's some good things we can take from, from what we've learned, you know, an opportunity to look at what worked, what didn't work when it came to teleworking, what can we do better? What can we do without? You know, let's hear the pros and cons of a hybrid approach, a hybrid model on certain department head, certain departments, possibly still teleworking. Does that make sense? Does it save the county money fiscally? All those types of things, Mr. Chairman, but, but it's, it's my strong opinion that we don't just hear from the CAO, as we did a couple of minutes ago, that the employees are returning, because we didn't grant a specific vote that gives her, that made a decision on the employees returning. And, Mr. Chairman, I know that as I'm still doing the meeting on Webex virtually, you know, I put in a full year of work, probably more than I have prior to the pandemic. That being said, I am communicating. I am, I do work every day from here. And so I can tell you that I, I've spoke to a number of department heads who have concerns about this June 15th plan of the CAO, who wish to be heard and in front of the five of us to present some ideas that they have. And I, I believe that they deserve the respect to have that opportunity, Mr. Chairman, especially, you know, just with, with the discussion on a couple of minutes ago, it lines up with, with what I'm hearing, Mr. Chairman. So I'd like to, you know, have the conversation real quick for the board to decide if we can have a study session, whether it's next week or in two weeks, so we can get the information. Let's hear the health opinion from Mr. Ed Hill, our, our health director. Let's hear from our CAO, yes. Let's hear from, let's, let's hear from the perspective of the department heads, and I got to imagine, there's not a lot of department heads who are saying, we don't come back. But if I heard from a few of them, then, then I'd imagine a couple would, would like to have that opportunity before the board. And so this is a strong decision. It's a critical decision. I'm not saying I'm against a June 15th return. I'm saying that we, the buck stops with us, and that we should make that decision. It's going to affect employee morale, welfare. There's employees who are nervous, have anxiety about the return, and there's some who are motivated to come back. And as I brought up last week, and I'll close with this, Mr. Chair, I, I brought up, I tried to bring up the conversation of us opening up the chambers back to the public, allowing our department heads to present in person, at which point that we officially open it up, I would like to return back as well, myself, physically. And so that being said, Mr. Chair, I would like to ask the board to consider the study session, so, so we can make that decision on the return and what type of model of return, whether it's the full return or any options we can learn from our department heads. Thank you for your time, sir.
Yeah, thank you. And I guess I've, I've heard just as many concerns, you know? I mean, the people that we serve in this community are frustrated that county offices are still closed and that, you know, vaccinations are available. And, and, you know, I think as leaders, we, we owe the community the service that, that is designated by the, the power of the state to undertake. And, and, you know, I mean, I, every time I walk out the side door of the office, you know, a Hispanic person trying to communicate through a speaker and, and, you know, it's very, very frustrating to try and, and have that done. And, and so I think clearly we've, we've created a safe path to, to delivering, you know, that message, but, but that, that also includes, you know, vaccinations, and, and for those that have chosen not to take vaccinations, you know? I mean, that is a decision, you know, their own, but, but I think we need to get back to some sort of normality for the, the, you know, it's, it's, obviously, we're the employer, but, but we serve the general public, and, and I think they're underserved right now, and they're frustrated, and, and we need to, you know, clearly move forward. But having said that, if there's any further discussion on, on this item, those brought forward?
I agree. I agree with Supervisor Peterson. I agree with CEO Campbell telling department heads, time to get back to work. They got till June 15th. Plenty of time to go out and get their shots, come back, keep themselves healthy and safe. You know, if you drive out in the community, it's almost like there's not a pandemic. We got a carnival, it's on the third week here this weekend. Solid people, the restaurants are full, the stores are full, people are out and about. No reason why we can't go to back, go back to work. I know I've had to come down here three times in the last, since the pandemic started to pay my property taxes, and each time I had to do so, I put it in a box. I, I just feel more comfortable talking to a person when I drop my taxes off, along with a lot of other people that felt that they need someone to communicate with when they want to bring their cash, and they're not comfortable dropping off in a box. I think it's time that we get back to work, but three times is way too much to be paying your taxes and supporting government officials like ourselves. We, when we're paying our taxes, we want to see people working, and it's time to get back to work. It's obvious, if you don't watch the news, there's not a pandemic. I do have faith in that we can overcome this, but you have to respect the virus and understand that it is out there and take your own precautions and not hide in your house and not hide, hide away. I think it's time to go back to work. And I, I haven't, like Supervisor Valley said, worked harder now in the last 17 months than we had before we had the virus. So I think it's time to get back to normalcy and take the precaution we need. If you're in fear of the virus, then get your shot. If you're in fear of the virus, you can get your shot, you want to come back to work, then, you know, stay by yourself, you know? Work in your own office, keep your door shut, whatever you have to do, but time to go back to work. So that's my thoughts. So, thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman, as I agree with all that, all, all I'm simply, and I hate to say that I'm asking for, I'm saying, I'm, I'm trying to say that, that it, I believe it's a public conversation, Kit, would the board be open to hearing the information in a study session so then we could officially vote to bring the employees back, but doing so after the public discussion? It's, you know, Mr. Chairman, I'm not, and I'm not surprised on the CAO. I've had several emails, whether back and forth over the last week. I've asked her some questions based on, you know, some feedback that I got, and, and I'm just, I'm just going to put it out there, Mr. Chairman. Apparently, you know, she met with the department heads and told them that they were coming back, and, and when they asked who granted that authority, she said the Board of Supervisors directed her to return, to return those employees back. I asked her in email if we did that vote, and she said no. So that's disturbing to me. The other part is that department heads have asked to come before our board to express some of their concerns in, in regards to their employees, and they're being told no, that they can't do that. And I want to come here today to say that any, any department head that ever wants to be heard has the ability to come before the Board of Supervisors. I, I don't care who the CAO is. They don't, they don't block them from us. That's information that we need on that. And so that, that, that being said, Mr. Chairman, I, I want you to know, if you haven't heard that, that the board, you know, that, that there's, there's roadblocks to department heads coming before us on this topic. And, and so, so based on that, Mr. Chair, let's, let's have that opportunity, and, and let's hear it. Let's hear it from Mr. Ed Hill on his opinion. I agree with Supervisor Verboon. You look out in the world, no pandemic, but that's because people aren't listening. When, just because general public people, you know, wanted to disregard what the governor laid out, doesn't mean that we, as elected officials, follow that. We're the leaders. Let's take it. This is an important, critical decision to make. Again, I'm not saying I'm opposed to June 15th. Might be the right, right move to make, but we got to hear from our department heads. We got to hear from the health director, and yes, then hear from the CAO on that day as well. So I, I don't think that's a lot to ask on behalf of the department heads, Mr. Chair. So with that, based on, based on what I've heard from them, I want to, I want to be a voice today and ask the board in the form of a motion, then, Mr. Chair, to, that, that we have a study session with the net, within the next two board meetings to get that presentation, to allow any department heads that wish to express concerns, good ideas possibly, and then that the Board of Supervisors makes the official vote on the return, because the buck stops with us. And that, and that would be my motion, Mr. Chairman, respectfully. Thank you.
Yeah. Well, again, thank you for the motion. You know, I think I have a problem with a few of the statements, you know, I mean, that you've made, or they're a little bit leading. Public comment is open to every person, you know, within this community, and they have the free will to do that. And I'll also express some concern of, you know, some, what I've heard floating out in the department head world of exclusive meetings that like-minded department heads are meeting and, and trying to confer that, you know, for some reason, that is the, the, the full understanding of, of every department head at the county, and I don't think that's the case. In fact, I know that's not the case. And so, you know, from my standpoint, we hired a CAO to manage the daily operations of, of our county. I think it's, you know, undermines her ability to manage staff. Ours is not the responsibility to manage staff, and, and, and again, I, I think, you know, time has passed, the abilities, the, the, you know, effects that we provided in the, in the offices with Plexiglas and protection, better understanding of how to protect yourself, wash your hands, all of those things. I just believe it's, it's time that we re-energize the county and, and do our jobs. And, you know, it starts, as far as I'm concerned, right here on the dais and, and every department head that we, we have at this community, they're leaders. And leaders lead by showing folks that they're leading, and, and you can't show someone you're leading when you're not here. And so I think it starts at the top, and, and it, and it has to move throughout every employee, but I'm not one that's going to vote to micromanage the, the staff. That is the job of the CAO, and, and I think we all share our feelings on, you know, where we want the county to be. And, and so anyways.
Mr. Chairman, can I, can I ask?
There is a motion on the table. Is there a second?
Mr. Chairman, our discussion.
You, you've had plenty of time, Supervisor Valley. I think we all understand where you're at. And, and so I appreciate it. You made a motion. There's a motion. Excuse me. There's a motion on the table, Supervisor. So let's see if there's a second. Okay? Appreciate that. Is there a second? Hearing none, the, the motion dies. I appreciate your comment, Supervisor.
Discussion.
Discussion's over, the, the.
No, no, you as the chairman, you're not there to silence everybody, okay?
But I am, sir.
You talk about undermining, you're undermining the, the leadership.
That's your opinion.
County supervisor. If I'm saying we have the ability to make the decision, and you, and you speak up before my motion even gets a chance to be discussed, and you're, and you're talking about comments here. Now, I don't appreciate the comment that you made that you can't lead if you're not there. You, what, how do you think you put it to the employees when you were there but telling them that they couldn't be there? Okay? Just because I'm doing virtually doesn't mean I'm not leading. I'm, I'm working very hard, Mr. Chairman, every day, and my constituents know it, and the people of Kings County know it, and hell, you know it, to be a fact. But if you're going to talk about why I'm not there, then say what happened the last time that I was there.
I don't believe I talked about you, sir. I talked about our department heads.
Quarantined. You know, so, so you know, Mr. Chairman, just put on note, it, it's disturbing for a county supervisor to be told that the CAO has given false information to them and their department heads. I bring it up to you right now. You don't even allow the discussion. Ask her. Ask her if what I said is true. Ask her if she's giving these department heads false information, and ask her if she's telling them that they're not allowed to come before us. I, I shared that with. I I shared that with you, and you don't even want to give them an opportunity to be heard, that's disturbing.
They have the opportunity to be heard every week during public comment, wide open, there's no, no one stopping anyone. We've had the discussion, your motion failed.
Wouldn't the studies session be more appropriate though than public comment?
Uh, yeah, I haven't heard anyone make a motion or uh, an encouragement to do so, so thank you. Uh, at this time. We will move to uh, a board member correspondence and and a board member uh, announcement, so.
Supervisor Verboon. I wanna, I wanna congratulate my former supervisor and my grandpa Peterson. Uh, the new arrival family is grown by one, congratulations.
Fourth generation starting, yikes.
All I have, thank you.
I'm good.
Thank you Supervisor, we're beginning Supervisor Navs.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, uh, the Cal ID uh, Remote Access Network Board had a special meeting. Uh, we have some older equipment uh, still running on Windows seven, uh, the uh, maintenance agreements are only gonna run uh, calendar year. It's about ten percent of the price of a purchase of a new machine to replace it, so staff is gonna look into that. And it'll come to the, this board in the future whether to uh, amend the maintenance agreements to. Correspond uh, calendar year and with support from the provider, or to go ahead and purchase new ones and move forward. Uh, they are running on a Windows seven platform, so it is somewhat dated. Uh, Kettleman City Hills uh, facility had an information meeting, uh, virtual, online, uh, talking about the facility, talking about emergency planning, did a good job, um. The uh, Victims' Right of Rights Event that was um, hosted by the District Attorney's Office was held and uh. I think very well attended, when I was there, I didn't uh, stay for the unveiling of the new quilts. But had an opportunity to look at the uh, historic quilts. And then watch the unveiling online, and so that's just one of those moving events that uh, that happen uh, throughout our community. As we uh, remember those uh, victims of of. Violence, uh, the Children's Movement had a webinar on Friday morning that was uh, very well attended and we continue to work through some of the challenges of uh. Some of our younger populations, uh, the statewide Behavioral Health Boards and Commissions uh, also held their quarterly uh, webinar. And uh, got update dated on some of the uh, tele psychiatry, tele medicine. Uh, some of the uh, improvements to uh, med delivery and um. And so just got uh, uh, updated on some of the challenges of the the COVID pandemic and the way we are delivering services to uh. That uh, part of our uh, population as well, continue to be a a game day volunteer at La Mor High. Kind of a weird uh, sensation to be having baseball, softball, and football along on the same season. But uh, we continue to work through those uh, challenges and and again, uh, pretty well attended. Uh, if you take out that because band's not there, um, I think, really, I think if you look at the um. The the people in attendance um, are still those parents, grandparents, um. And even at the football games, when you, when you think about those hundreds, hundred plus students that are in the band program. When you take those out of the mix, I think that, I think even the football games were pretty, pretty consistent in their uh. People that attend, uh, Ed Hill told me not to call them fans, they're observers, so uh, in the uh, opinion of the governor. Uh, you can't call them baseball fans or softball fans or football fans, they are football observers. That makes the pandemic much better, uh, the La Mor High Spring Fling uh, took place, it was in a drive-through event. Uh, very well uh, attended, some pretty good food, uh, want to thank everyone that put that together. Um, and uh, trying to get back in the supporting students. And then the Behavioral Health Board had their uh, monthly meeting yesterday, uh, receiving an update on staff from Dr. Lee, uh. Dr. Lewis, um, and the way uh, programs are being delivered, uh, Behavioral Health had a very challenging year, uh, with uh. A lot of the system changes as well as the remodel at Kingsview and and have and. Trying to find creative ways to deliver services and meet the needs of the community have been a challenge, but uh, they've come through it very well. Uh, next month, May is uh, Mental Health Awareness Month, and then plus we'll have some updates on the Mental Health Services Act. So uh, we look forward to having those come forward um, in May, so with that, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you Supervisor Valley.
Uh, yeah, Mr. Chairman, first of all, Mr. Chairman, I want to apologize to you for the talking over, I I like to be professional, I know you want to be professional too. It's not professional to uh, start shouting through here, but it it is very frustrating to always have to ask for permission to talk. Or wait to see, you know, when, when I can talk, when anyone else in the chamber isn't being that formal, they're just talking when they want to talk. And and that's fine, but it's very difficult on this end, that being said, Mr. Chairman, um, uh, since there's no votes to return. Um, the employees back and hear, hear um, that information, hear from the Health Director. Then very simply, Mr. Chair, can you go ahead and um, are you willing to make an announcement? To open up to chambers next week to the department heads in the, in the physical form, and if so, then I'd be, um, as long as they're coming back. And 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 we're declaring this safe, then I I'd be there as well physically, so. Uh, would you be able to do that, or or uh, direct the C A O to do that and send that notice out? And also um, uh, to allow percentage of the uh, public and the taxpayers of the counties to be back in the chambers next week as well. Um, that, that would be my ask, Mr. Chair.
Yeah, well, um, unfortunately, the business portion of the meeting is over, and uh, this is about uh. Supervisor comments and uh, we'll take that under consideration, but I think, you know, I think it's uh. There's a timeline that's been established and and I'll confer with the C A O, but.
Okay, well, then I'd like to meet with her, then that, that's, that's gonna be my comment, we're allowed to give directives too, and if you'd like to uh. Uh, be part of that meeting, I could be there as soon as um, this meeting's over too. Or anytime this week, but I I would like to have that meeting.
Anytime.
Okay, thank you, I'll follow up, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Alright, word correspondence.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, in correspondence, we have a notice from the State Water Resources Control Board. A petition for a temporary change involving water transfer from Tulley Basin Farms to various state water project contractors. Upcoming meetings and events, Peace Officers Memorial is May twelfth. At ten AM in the Kings County Government Center outdoors, um, tickets will be required to attend. Pandemic Relief Funding Programs, um, Community Services Event that will be held via Webex, and that will be held on May fourth at three thirty via Webex. Upcoming agenda items, we have the COVID nineteen update for next week from the Ag Commissioner, there'll be a fixed asset purchase for ag services and supplies. There'll also be from Community Development Agency, the twenty twenty Community Development Brok Block Grant. For the Coronavirus Response Round Two and Three Application, from Finance, pre-funding the fiscal year twenty one twenty two CalPERS. Unfunded accrued liability contributions, from Health Department, amending code section two four zero of the Ordinance Code for the first five program. From Health, also an advanced step higher request, from the Assessor, agreement for outside access to Assessor's database. From Behavioral Health, Mental Health Awareness Month, from Human Services Agency, a study session regarding the General Assistance Program. From Public Works, the SB one funded Kings County Roadway Improvement Projects, annual uh, item for the board. Also from Public Works, the Kettleman City State Route forty one pedestrian crossing and pathway improvements item. There'll be also from Public Works, Traffic Control Policies and Warrants Manual, coming before the board next week. From the Sheriff's Office, four items, we have a resolution and grant agreement for the California Department of Parks and Recreation. An agreement with Securus Technologies, an agreement for a, actually, it's a purchase agreement for dental sterilization. And a washing machine. That's all I have for upcoming items.
Alright, very good, uh, next up, we have closed session, and we have two items. Uh, litigation initiated formally, it's the uh, La Prino Foods Company versus Kings County. And it's a County Superior Court Case Number two zero C zero one five nine, under Government Code Section five four nine five six point nine. And then secondly, uh, we have com- conference with Labor Negotiators, and that is Negotiators Rebecca Campbell, Carrie Martinez, Henny Ring. Jay Johnson of Liberty Cassidy Whitmore with the uh, Deputy Sheriff's Association. Do we expect any reporting out, Adam Council?
We do not, Mr. Chair, thank you.
Very good, thank you. Alright, uh, so at this time, uh, we do have another meeting eleven o'clock, California Public Finance Authority, regular meeting. But this time we will adjourn to closed session. So thank you.
Thank you.
Just a quick update, the board is still in closed session. We should be resuming shortly. Thank you.
Yes, sir. We can hear you. I think they're having a speaker issue in the board chambers.
Okay, they're aware of it?
Yeah, I just got a message.
Oh, okay. You're the IT, Aaron?
Yes, sir.
All right. Well, you're not in the chambers. You're doing it from your IT department?
I'm actually working remotely.
Oh, okay. And so you're able to handle all the technical difficulties that way?
Yes, sir. It's a mix between myself and then we have Alfred in the chamber, so we work together on it.
Oh, nice. All right.
Team effort.
Yeah, yeah.
It's eleven twenty and we were scheduled for an eleven o'clock meeting, so let's go ahead and call meeting to order the California Public Finance Authority, which please call a roll.
Here.
Joe Nevs.
Here.
Richard Valley.
Here.
Doug Verboon.
Here.
Craig Peterson.
Here.
Richard Fagundis.
Here.
Okay, we have five present and we'll move to item two, which is approval of the minutes of the April thirteenth, 2021.
Move and present it. I'll move ahead. Second.
All right.
Your anticipation, yeah. Oh, no, I was working on the next one. Yeah.
Okay, we have motion by Verboon, second by Fagundis, mound clerk, please call roll.
Joe Nevs.
Yes.
Richard Valley.
Aye.
Doug Verboon.
Yes.
Craig Peterson.
Aye.
Richard Fagundis.
Yes.
Okay, five in favor on that item. We'll move to item three A, which is well, actually consent calendar and board with your pleasure.
Move as present Mr. Chair Nevs.
Second Verboon.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the consent calendar as provided. Please call roll.
Joe Nevs.
Yes.
Richard Valley.
Aye.
Doug Verboon.
Yes.
Craig Peterson.
Aye.
Richard Fagundis.
Yes.
Okay, we have five in favor on that issue. This time now, item four is public comment. Any person may directly address the board at this time on any item on the gender or the other items of interest to the public that is within the subject matter jurisdiction of the board. Five minutes are allowed for each item. Do we have any requests for?
No one with their hand raised or written comments.
Very good. We will move now to item five, which is staff updates. I see Caitlin's on the line. Caitlin, you have anything for us today?
Good morning. I have nothing for you today.
All righty. Well, thank you. Right. Any further items to come for the board, for board members or seeing none? Thank you all. Move to item six, which is adjournment. Thank you, John.
Thank you. Have a good day.